Mark Granikus is rolling.
Okay.
We're good to go?
Not yet. Hey, Mr. Mayor, we like.
Thank you. So today is March 2, 2022. The time is seven eighteen.
Recording stopped.
And I am.
Recording in progress.
Park City Council Virtual Regular Meeting. And then we'll start off with a Pledge of Allegiance. City Manager, do you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay, I'm unmuted finally. Very good. As I look at your screen and facing the flag, everyone else do the same. Please your right hand over your heart. And ready, begin. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America.
And to the Republic of America, which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor.
Yes, Marie.
Mayor, may I just, may I just say a little invocation?
Yes, please. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Dear heavenly, okay, dear heavenly Father, we ask to enlighten our council and our mayor. As we begin our meeting, please guide them to have the right decisions for our residents. We ask for our police officers when they go out into our city to keep them safe, keep our residents safe. We ask for your guidance for all of our residents and our employees of the city of Baldwin Park. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Marie. It's been a while since we've had an invocation, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna start with, we'll start with our City Treasurer, Marie Contreras.
Yeah.
Awesome. Councilmember Alejandra Avila. Here. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Here.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here. Thank you for that, City Clerk. Uh, City Attorney, is there anything to report from closed session?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. The council did consider multiple items in closed session. They took one final action. The City Council voted upon a motion by Mayor Estrada and a second by Councilmember Hernandez to accept a separation and severance agreement from Ben Martinez. The amount was a total of eighty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and twelve, eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and eight cents. That comes along with the waiver of any claims or anything of that nature. And Mr. Martinez is separated from the city as of today. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for that, City Attorney. And then just, uh, so we're all aware, we're not done with closed session, so we'll be revisiting back at the end of this meeting. And then we have proclamations, commendations, and presentations. And today is March 2. And March is Women's History Month, so I believe we have Cruz Baca, who's part of the Women's History Club. I'm not sure if, uh, Women's, uh, Women's, Women's Club. Sorry, I'm over here making up clubs. Part of the Women's Club. Uh, and then I don't know if you brought anybody else with you.
I did not. I'm sorry. I'm not, um, I'm not in Baldwin Park this evening. So, uh, that's another reason I don't have the proclamation with me. It was delivered this evening. And so, um, but thank you so very much. Uh, would you like to read it, Mayor, since I don't have it?
Yes, so I will read it. So Women's History Month, March 2022. Whereas throughout history, extraordinary women have fought tirelessly to broaden our democracy's reach and help perfect our union through protest and activism. For generations, women have appealed to the values at the heart of our nation and fought to give it meaning to the idea that we are all created equal. Whereas this month, we celebrate countless pioneering women and the victories they won. And we continue our work to build a society where our daughters have the same possibilities as our sons. They have demonstrated for justice, but also for jobs, ones that promise equal pay for equal work. Courageous women have called not only for the absence of oppression, but for the presence of opportunity. Women have marched for the right to vote, not just so their voices would be heard, but so that they could have a seat at the head of the table. They have fought to overcome discrimination and shattered glass ceilings. And after decades of slow, steady, and determined progress, they have widened the circle of opportunity for women and girls across the country. Whereas we honor the many patriots who have shaped not only the destinies of other women, but also the direction of our history. As a nation, we must join our voices with the chorus of history and push forward with unyielding faith to forge a more equal society for all our daughters and granddaughters. Whereas today, more women are their family's main breadwinner than ever before. Women are nearly half of our nation's workers. This increasing participation of women in our workforce has sustained our economy and strengthened our families. Now, therefore, I, Emmanuel J. Estrada, Mayor of the City of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian, Councilmembers Alejandra Avila, Monica Garcia, Paul C. Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria E. Contreras, and City Clerk Marlon Garcia do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Women's History Month in the City of Baldwin Park, California. And in doing so, we encourage all Americans to observe this month and celebrate with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And of course, we're presenting it to the Women's Club and Cruz, you know, who, uh, not only you have a, uh, a record here in the City of Baldwin Park, and you are part of Baldwin Park history as a, uh, former council member, and of course, your, your bloodline, uh, is, is, plays a big role in, in the forming and shaping of Baldwin Park, uh, before it became Baldwin Park.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the council members and, and everyone. This is an honor on behalf of the ladies. We aren't that many members. We're only a fifty-seven members. However, we work tirelessly. Again, this year, we were able to, or we are going to be able to give out seven one thousand dollar scholarships to the graduates from North Park Service to High School and Ball Park High School and, and five, five hundred dollar scholarships to students going on to careers and, and as well as maybe going on to higher academics. So we're very proud of the ongoing fundraising and our, our love for our community that we do and work so hard. We're, as I've said before, we're the oldest, uh, organization in Baldwin Park. We're a hundred and thirteen years old now. And so we're very, we're very, very proud. I'm very proud. Thank you so very much, um, on behalf of all the ladies that work so hard. As you know, we do it from the heart, not so much as to, uh, get an award or, uh, for the accolades. But, um, thank you so very much. And thank you to all those that, that continue donating to us. As everyone knows, COVID was a challenge. We weren't able to have our in-person events, but everyone still keep, went up front and, and donated to us so that that way we could continue, uh, sharing with the rest of our community. Thank you, Mayor.
And council members and everyone. Yes, uh, so real quick, before I hand it over, sorry, I think it was, uh, Councilwoman Avila. I do just want to mention, um, so I was, uh, you know, I'm very excited that, you know, the Women's Club has been around for so long. And I don't think a lot of us are aware, but Baldwin Park actually has a very rich history, and we actually have a lot of, uh, women trailblazers in our city, and I don't know if people are aware of that. And so, uh, you know, we had our first ever, um, woman mayor who was Adelina Gregory, and I believe that was in the seventies, and before that, she was a council member. Over a decade, she was voted in, uh, by her peers, which means that she was voted in by, you know, uh, the rest of her council was before, uh, we voted for mayors independently. During that time, at some point, she was a, one of three women in a, in a elected position in the San Gabriel Valley. And she was also the first woman, uh, the first woman, so I believe Chair of the ICA. So, you know, we have a lot of trailblazers. We have her, we have Betty Lowe, who of course, uh, we, we recognized in her passing and, and, uh, and, uh, spoke to her family about, uh, and she was our first elected woman mayor. So that was another one in the nineties. And then we had, uh, Julie McNeil, who wasn't only a trailblazer in women history, she was a trailblazer in black woman history in the City of Baldwin Park. So it's very important that we keep our Baldwin Park history alive and that we encourage people to look at the history that we have and, and really how, how the, the, the trailblazing women that are coming out of Baldwin Park. And of course, you know, now we have Susan Rubio and Blanca Rubio, who are two sisters at the Capitol of Immigrant Sound, which I think is, is a great story for a lot of our residents, you know. And of course, all the women that are, they're leading and are part of the council and our, our city clerk and our, uh, and of course, our favorite city treasurer, Muri. So, um, yeah, it's very important that we, that we, you know, that we pride ourselves in the history that we have and, and the, and the, you know, when the last things have been broke, that have been broken by, by, uh, past leaders. And of course, recognizing the Women's Club was been around for a very long time and continues to be active. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Avila.
Well, thank you, Mayor. You just mentioned a lot of the people I was going to mention.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did it like in one breath. I was like.
That's awesome. Yeah. So I, I want to thank, uh, the Baldwin Park Women's Club. They do an amazing job. Like you said, they're providing all these scholarships for our, our high school students. And so that's something to look up to, and they do work very hard. I was part of the Women's Club for a very short time, and they do a lot. And I look forward to very soon, Ms. Cruz Baca, to come back as soon as I have time. But I want to thank you, Cruz Baca, since I do have you in front of me. First, thank all the women in the club for me for doing an amazing job. And I want to thank you for being a leader in our city and a role model for our young women here in the City of Baldwin Park. There's definitely a lot to look up to, and we appreciate everything that, that you have done and everything that you continue to do for the City of Baldwin Park. And so showcase to our young women what they can do in the future. Once again, thank you. And thank all the women in the Women's Club for me.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then, sorry, I forgot one more, and that's Ana Montenegro, who was, uh, one of the first Latinas elected and one of the longest-serving treasures in the City of Baldwin Park. So.
Yes.
Have a great history. So.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, it's just, I was just thinking, if we look at all of our elected officials from our Congresswoman, State Senator, Assembly Member, County Board of Supervisors, all of them are females. And all of them have broken that glass ceiling for, for so many of us. And, um, I have the distinction of being the first Latina elected to the Baldwin Park City Council and, uh, made the history book of the City of Baldwin Park. And, um, it carries a, a strong responsibility in that, uh, we are role models to those that are looking up to, to be leaders in our community. And so we can't forget all of those that have set that trail for the rest and, and acknowledge them and recognize them, appreciate them. And, uh, and continue the, the battle because it continues to be a battle. I'm so happy that the President of the United States is considering a female, uh, has supported a female to, to serve as one of our Supreme Justices. So that, that speaks volumes. And the fact that she's African-American is even more inspirational. So we have a lot to celebrate this Women's Month. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Cruz. Thank you for your leadership and for all the work that you do with the Women's Club, not only there, and in every other organization that you're part of. So thank you, Cruz, for all your work.
Oh, no, thank you very much, Danny. And thank everyone for all. It's, it's, uh, it takes a village. And so it's, it's everybody's, uh, like I said, from, from donating to, uh, working to referring us to different people that might need the help, to the teachers, to everyone that sort of, um, this is such a family-oriented community that it's everybody, everybody, this is everybody working together to move forward and to help everyone. So, um, thank you. But Mayor, um, real fast, I don't know if I'm stepping on anyone's toes, but I would like to also, um, see if you could please, um, close in memory of, you mentioned my cousin, um, Ana Montenegro, um, who was Baca Montenegro, actually, the treasurer for many years. Her son passed away, um, a week ago. And was in a terrible automobile accident, and he passed away. So if you could please close in his memory, Mark Montenegro. So thank you, everyone. I'm sorry.
I think it might have just been a, she was on.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
But thank you, Cruz, for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. On behalf of the ladies, see you soon.
Thank you. See you soon. And of course, the council and myself send to our condolences and the rest of the family. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, at this moment, I will pass this over to, uh, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mayor. Uh, our next proclamation is to the American Red Cross. I know we have, uh, Ms. Erica Fausto Aguera with us. Uh, I believe she might be feeling a bit under the weather, so I do appreciate, uh, her commitment to even be with us and spend a little bit of time even remotely. And, uh, and so forth. Are you there, Erica?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Councilmember. Um, and you're right. I, I am a little under the weather. Unfortunately, my household is under the weather, but, you know, hopefully this, this will pass soon. But I really appreciate you having me on and proclaiming, um, this month as March is Red Cross Month. It's been celebrated since nineteen forty-three, so we appreciate, um, um, you doing this for us. And of course, our partnership with, uh, the City of Baldwin Park, our continuing, um, partnership. And we are looking forward to, uh, doing more in the city, more activities, um, coming up with, um, in May, um, our big Sound the Alarm event, where we will be installing fire alarms, um, in the city. There is more information to come. But we are, uh, really appreciative of, um, of this proclamation. Thank you.
Perfect. And with that, um, I, I'm sure the rest of my colleagues will have things to say, because you, uh, the Red Cross has been, has had a, a long-term relationship with the city. I know we've really upped it up over the last couple of years, and we're continuing to move forward on various things. And again, thank you for your service and for your assistance, uh, with the families, uh, that were affected this past weekend, uh, nonetheless. But so with that, allow me to read this, uh, proclamation, and we'll make sure to get it to your hands and your offices, uh, as promptly as possible.
Thank you.
So this reads, the American Red Cross Month is March twenty twenty-two. Whereas more than a hundred and forty years ago, the American Red Cross was established as a humanitarian organization guided by seven fundamental principles, including humanity, humanity, imperative, and independence to provide service to those in need, regardless of race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or citizenship. Whereas every year, the American Red Cross responds to an average of more than sixty-two thousand disasters across the country. From small home fires to devastating massive disasters, thousands of American Red Cross volunteers provide around-the-clock shelter for disaster victims and distribute millions of relief items. Whereas March is Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank Red Cross volunteers, donors who help members of their community. We applaud our heroes in Great, in the Greater San Gabriel Valley and Pomota Valley chapters, who give themselves to assist their neighbors when they need a helping hand. Whereas the American Red Cross shelters feed, provide emotional support to victims of disaster supplies about forty percent of the nation's blood, teaches skills that saves lives, provides international humanitarian aid, and support military members and their families. Whereas in Los Angeles, the, the Red Cross is a long history of helping our neighbors in need and handling an average of three thousand military, uh, excuse me, uh, emergency, uh, calls every year. Whereas we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the faces of emergencies. Our community depends on American Red Cross, which delivers on volunteers and the generosity of the public to, to perform its mission. Now, therefore, I, Emmanuel J. Estrada, Mayor of City of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian, Councilmember, Councilmembers Alejandra Avila, Monica Garcia, Paul C. Hernandez, City Treasurer Marie E. Contreras, and City Clerk Marlon Garcia do hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-two as American Red Cross Month in the City of Baldwin Park. And in doing so, we encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. I just want to highlight, uh, you know, we have some of those volunteers in our community. Um, I believe, uh, Director Ralph Galvin with the Valley County Water District is one of those volunteers that supports our neighbors and our residents during times of needs, not only here in City of Baldwin Park, but also in the region. So as, uh, Erica mentioned, uh, we have a big event, uh, you know, to prevent, uh, fires and disasters in our city, uh, in which, uh, the rest of the council and the city and of all of our partners, uh, will be, uh, you know, um, marching on, on, uh, May fourteenth on a Saturday. So mark your dates. Additional information will be provided. Uh, this will be a time in which we will be assisting and installing, uh, fire alarms in individual homes, uh, and apartment units. You know, we also have Red Cross, uh, blood drives. Uh, we have one coming up on March fifteenth. Erica can certainly provide you the link to that. I believe it's redcrossblooding.org. I could be wrong, Erica, but you can correct me on that one. So with that, uh, thank you for everything that you're doing. Um, I know that we're also, uh, have applied for a, a grant, a, a connected community grants, uh, that hopefully will cross our fingers, uh, that, uh, you know, the city will be in, uh, receipt of that at some point. But again, that just illustrates, uh, the long-term relationship and the future partnership, uh, items that we have planned, not only for this year, but in the years to come. With that, I turn it over to my council. Thank you.
Thank you. So of course, you know, we want to thank Erica and the, and the team for all they do. They, uh, I, I think you mentioned that they, uh, you know, they help during emergency services, you know, when there's fires, they go out there and they help, and they make sure that, uh, those families have some sort of aid to, uh, find shelter, relief during those hard times. So we want to thank you for that and being a good neighbor to the City of Baldwin Park. And of course, we cannot forget to mention that the Red Cross was founded by a woman. So, uh, we want to recognize that too, Claire Barton. So a little fun fact. So thank you, Erica, and your team, and of course, uh, all the volunteers in our community, and of course, our, our Board of Director on the Waterboard, Ralph Galvin, who's always out there as well, and, and volunteers this time. So, uh, if any other council members, uh, wants to pour, now is your time.
I just, I would just like to thank, uh, Erica and the American Red Cross for everything that they do, Mayor. Thank you so much, Erica.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to take the opportunity to thank Red Cross for your assistance, especially recently with families who were affected by the, the homes, their homes, um, you know, uh, being destroyed due to fire. So just want to say thank you for your assistance and for being a partner to the City of Baldwin Park, especially in those times of need for our families. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Erica, for being here. Um, so at this moment, I will open Public Communications. Chief Deputy City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
No, Mayor.
Great. So at this moment, uh, before we close, I do want to, uh, honor Cruz Baca's request, our, our former, uh, council member. And pose on behalf of Mark Montenegro, as I mentioned before, the Montenegro family and the Baca family are, are, uh, have a long history here in the City of Baldwin Park and have played a great role in it. And of course, we want to, uh, show our respects whenever we can and show them our support whenever it is needed. So, uh, at this moment, I will close Public Communications.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, if we could also close in memory of Yvonne Jimenez, a longtime resident of the City of Baldwin Park. She passed away, uh, of cancer. Uh, she'd been battling cancer for quite some time. Her parents, uh, father still lives here in Baldwin Park. And, uh, miss, her mother, Mrs. Jimenez, passed away last year from complications, uh, due to COVID. So it's been a tremendous loss to have lost her mom and now to lose her. So if we could please close in her memory, uh, that would be wonderful.
Yes, of course. So we will, on your request, uh, City Clerk, and close on, uh, her behalf. And of course, also extend our, uh, sincerest sympathies to that family. And let them know that, of course, City of Baldwin Park is here to show them support in any way possible, uh, during this rough time. So at this moment, uh, we'll move to consent calendar. And are there any items looking, uh, for council that is looking to pull?
Mr. Mayor, can I pull, uh, thirteen, please?
Okay. Is there any other items? Thirteen.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item fifteen.
Thirteen, fifteen. Okay, so I'll pull item number four and five, and then you have thirteen and fifteen. So at this moment, I'll make a motion to pass the consent calendars, items one through fourteen, excluding items thirteen, fifteen, four, and five. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chief Deputy or City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you. Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that. Uh, so motion passes. So we are down to items four and five. So I just, I'll bring them up together. Uh, Danny, I know that, um, you know, residents have shown a lot of, uh, excitement, um, regarding the, uh, the events coming back. So just kind of talking about the budget, I know that, um, you know, there's a lot of excitement. I know people want us to come back. So can you kind of tell us where we're getting the funds from? And then, so, and there's a possibility to, and then kind of have discussions, there's a possibility to extend the dollar budget for the artists that we're looking to hire.
Well, Dan, thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this staff report is for City Council to consider approval of, of the concerts in the park series, budget appropriation, as well as the downtown street market. Uh, the funding sources are coming from a few different funding sources. I'll just, uh, refer to the staff for fiscal impact to the general fund. It's ten thousand, four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and, and, and an additional sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven for oh-two, oh-three. Uh, the total cost of the event is seventy-seven, nine hundred and sixty thousand, uh, seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars over a six-week period, which includes revenue, salary, entertainment, sound technician, giveaways, materials, and supplies. That fiscal impact is, is pertaining only to the concert in the park series. In regards to the fiscal impact for the downtown street market, it is, uh, a little bit more. We traditionally spend a little bit more on, on the, uh, downtown street market, uh, because we have to set up out on the street. There's some, uh, additional costs in regards to outdoor restroom, lighting, things of that nature. Uh, the costs or the prices of entertainment have increased slightly, uh, over the last few years. This will, we haven't had the street market or the concerts in the last two years due to COVID. So the prices have gone up a little bit. We have, we've captured pretty much all of the costs in regards to part-time pay, full-time pay. And when I say full-time pay, that includes the police department, recreation department, public works, and all the other support costs. So I think that pretty much, uh, concludes staff, uh, staff's, uh, comments in regards to, uh, the two staff reports. Be happy to answer any, any type of questions, uh, the council may, uh, may have.
So just for, so just for the actual, like, music entertainment, what is, what, like, I, what is the budget? I wasn't able to decipher.
Generally speaking, uh, each, each stage, if I had to gen- generalize it, each stage is probably in the neighborhood of about fifty-five hundred dollars. So keeping in mind the concerts in the park, we have six concerts, we have one stage. So we will probably average about fifty-five hundred dollars. We may spend more on some weeks and less on others. Uh, and then in regards to the downtown street market, we have two stages. One on the north end of the street on Main and the south end. Usually, the south end of the stage has the larger group, uh, just because it, we have a little bit more, uh, wiggle room on that end of the stage. And one, once again, it's probably about fifty-five hundred on an average, but we are probably going to in- increase that slightly just because, uh, we are getting, uh, some quotes back from some of the vendors or the performers, and the prices are coming back a little bit, a little bit more than anticipated. But, uh, this is, uh, the, uh, budget. If we should requ- require any additional funds, please keep in, in mind that we have not started planning for the next fiscal year's budget. That will start off July first. So if we should need additional funds, we could incorporate that into the budget cycle.
And then so July first, so how many, do you know how many concerts in the park we have before then?
Oh, we will have one. The first concert will commence June thirtieth, uh, which is the last Thursday in the fiscal, uh, of June and, uh, the last Thursday of the fiscal year.
Yeah. So I know that, sorry. So I know that, that things are, you know, everything's in demand right now because everything's coming back. So there's a lot of, uh, negotiating with, with a lot of these artists, and I wouldn't want to wait till July, because by the time July's here, I don't think you have enough room to schedule them and book them. Um, you know, you can't book an artist from one week to the next, right? Normally, it takes a couple of months.
Correct.
You know, at least, I'd like to see if we can add, uh, ten thousand dollars just for the, for the entertainment budget to make sure that you have the room to negotiate with a lot of these artists and make sure that, you know, we don't lose out on a, on a. To make sure that you have the room to negotiate with a lot of these artists and make sure that, you know, we don't lose out on a, on a, on a city favorite over, you know, one or two thousand, and that gives you the room.
Thank you, Mayor. That's an excellent rec recommendation. We are looking at attracting, or I should say, continuing our longstanding reputation. By bringing some of the best groups around. We, we have had some great groups and we will continue that tra- tradition this summer.
Great.
Mayor, I have a question. Is this, are you talking just about item four? Are you combining them with item five?
Um, well, I was thinking, you know, I'm not sure. I guess that's maybe a discussion. How much do you think we can budget? I just want to make sure that, that, because you know, we're not going to be able to, you know, when you, when you. When you reserve artists, right? You don't reserve them from one week to the next or one month to the next, unless you're very lucky. So we want to make sure that Manny has the room now to lock in the artists that, that are the cities, you know, that are crowd favorites and make sure that are.
Yes.
They don't have to come back during, you know, we don't want them to negotiate now. And then by the time we come back to the next council meeting, somebody else might have booked them for that day.
Sure. Mayor, if I, if I may make the recommendation, if those are, if that is council's wishes, I would recommend adding to the entertainment budget. Ten thousand dollars for the summer concerts and an additional fifteen thousand dollars for the street market. And we will use the money very wisely. We will not exhaust the funds if not necessary.
I'm okay with that. I think it's, I think it'd be very nice to make sure that we have a, a strong comeback in our events and all the. Our residents have been eager for them to come back and they've been patiently waiting. So I think the least we can do is give them a good show.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember.
And if, if I recall, you did say you were going to be one of the performers.
Oh.
Either contracts in the park or the street. So.
Well, that's why.
There were no, no fees for that one, correct?
There, there is no fees, but that's why I want to make sure he has all the wiggle room he has. And then, you know, if we can't, if we can, if we can't lock in a band, I'll be the backup. We'll, we'll make sure something plays. Don't worry.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
Mayor, so we're allocating ten, ten additional thousand dollars for the concerts at the park and then an additional fifteen thousand for the downtown street market.
Yeah. And I think that's because they have the two stages at that event, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Well, if there's no objection, I'll make a motion to pass item number four and five with the recommended added.
I have a. Are you, I'm sorry, you're passing both items together?
Yeah.
Okay, so quick before we go, I have a question regarding item five, Manny. The budget that you have on here, does this include the ten thousand dollars that we had allocated for the PSAs? To, to promote the, the event and then also the twenty thousand dollars that we had allocated for. The Baldwin Park small businesses to be able to have their booths for free that we would cover that for them out of the American Rescue Plan Funds?
I am double checking as, as you asked that, and I believe it is included on there. I am not one hundred percent. But at the staff level, we have been talk, talking about this. So I believe it is included in there. If by chance, we did make an error and leave it off, I don't think we, we did. I'm reading the staff report. We can also make, we could also always make the adjustment as part of the new fiscal year. But I believe it is added. Keep in mind, the downtown street market will not commit, will, will not start until six weeks after June thirtieth. So doing the math in my head, that is, is probably the.
The August.
Yeah, mid-August, we will start the downtown street market all the way through. September, and I believe September fifteenth for the big holiday will be our, our last one.
Yeah, because I was reviewing the staff report and I don't see the, I don't see the allocations for that. So I just want to make sure that we. We separate from the, the ARP funds, the ten thousand to promote the event. And then also not forget the twenty thousand that we had decided back at the February at the. I forget what meeting it was. I think it was last year in October, where we were going to contribute the twenty thousand dollars from the ARP funds. To cover the small businesses booths there as well. So.
Okay. If, if by chance Mayor Pro Tim, we, we left it off, I'm looking under back background, the. Finishing off the first paragraph, I believe it's included, but if you could also give us latitude and provide a recommendation to work with finance to make any adjustments. I think that would probably cover, cover our bases.
You know, Manny, the way I read it and but of course, being able to clarify makes sense is that the request is, is for general fund funding. The others would come from ARP, which you have already taken action to allocate those.
Correct.
And appropriate them. So the request is specific to general fund. So it's not included in the request, Councilmember Damian, but it's, or Mayor Pro Tim Damian, but it was already approved by the council in.
Got it. Okay.
In a different action for ARP funding.
Okay, just want to make sure we don't, we don't lose that out. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I add, if I may, just real quick.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. And I don't know if we have to make a decision today, Manny, but considering that El Grito is on, is on Friday, September the sixteenth. Perhaps we, we may want to consider instead of moving it on a Thursday, hosting it on a Thursday night, we do it on a Friday night to incorporate El Grito. And celebrate in and around that celebration, just to bring out most more folks out on a Friday night versus a Thursday night. You know, any thoughts on that, colleagues? And again, we don't have to make a decision, but at least something to consider.
Councilmember Hernandez, isn't the Grito on the fifteenth?
I thought it's sixteenth. This depends where you celebrate it.
It's the fifteenth at midnight.
Oh, okay.
The fifteenth?
Oh, got it.
It's at midnight, going into the sixteenth. Yeah.
All right, we can do it. That's fine.
Towards the end. And then, of course, you know, of course, Mexico has the Grito, which is very symbolic and one of the most popular things on that day. But we also want to make sure we include our Latin American counterparts, as many of those countries also celebrate their Independence Day on that day, I believe. So just make sure we have a Grito, but a little bit of multicultural stuff, a little bit of multicultural in the background.
Absolutely. Excellent.
So I think that's good. So, so we're making a motion to pass item number four and five with the added, with the added, with the added. Room for expenditures, so ten thousand to the concert of the park budget and then it's fifty thousand dollars to the downtown street market budget for entertainment. And of course, want to make sure that we double check our ARPA and that everything is in line. And that is my motion. So can I get a second?
Second.
A good.
Chief Deputy City, or you know what, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I believe you are item number thirteen, I believe, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. I appreciate this. Again, thank you, staff. Lulu, just for added, for clarification. Does this also include those petitions? It seemed like, you know, just to add one more additional ballot item was about another thousand or so to, you know, overall, generally over the overall cost. But does this also include for those outside petitions that are being driven right now?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez. So the cost estimate for the five offices is around one sixty. If you were to add one ballot, it's, it's only a three hundred dollar difference. And I did include up to six measures and that's a hundred and sixty-two, a hundred and sixty-three roughly.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for all of us, just so we have a general sense of, you know, what that cost is, whether we put them on or whether they're outside folks that are. Putting them on for, for various reasons. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to pass item thirteen as is.
Second. Chief City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that. And then Mayor Pro Tim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at item fifteen. This is for the. The current entry level salaries for part-time positions with the Recreation Department, Parks and Rec. So as you guys know, right now, the entry salary is fifteen twenty-three an hour. And we're having a very difficult time hiring staff to make sure that we have the manpower to be able to. Have the downtown street market and the concerts in the park. So. One of the things that I would like to do is direct staff to have the part-time entry level start at sixteen eighty-two an hour. Obviously, this would only be a short-term fix, because what would happen is we were going to, we're going to start to have significant compaction issues with the long-term part-time employees. So. You know, right now you have especially retail stores, fast food restaurants, or, you know, they're paying sixteen, seventeen dollars an hour. And for us to entice, you know, our, our people to apply, we have to pay more than the fifteen twenty-three an hour. So my recommendation would be, you know, start them off at sixteen eighty-two. But I would also like to direct staff to incorporate a new part-time salary structure as part of the fiscal year for twenty-two, twenty-three. Budget, because we need to make sure that it's going to be fair for all of our staff. Right now, this is just something that's, that's a sense of urgency, because we need to make sure that we have adequate time to be able to fly these positions, have them apply. Put them to the backgrounds and then train them so that we have them ready for, I don't know, Manny, maybe mid-May or beginning of June, that you would need to have the staff ready. To be able to accomplish the downtown street market and the park, concerts at the park?
Yes. I mean, if with council's consensus, if this item gets approved, we will start marketing tomorrow.
Okay. So that would be, that would be my recommendation. Again, you know, the justification is there, you know, we're just not going to entice anybody to apply for fifteen twenty-three an hour. So that would be my, that would be my direction to staff.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Avila.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Damian. This has been actually a conversation that has been brought up for some years now. And I've had this conversation with Manny, how we need to entice people to come to work for us and to be able to keep them. I think it's a good idea to increase it to sixteen eighty-two and to look into. The salary structure that we currently have for the current year. So that is a great idea. Thank you. I definitely am in agreement with you.
Great. And I just want to reiterate and support what Mayor Pro Tim is talking about. And I, and I agree, right? Want to make sure that we're competitive and that we're enticing people to want to work here. And of course, you know, the pay is going to reflect the type of, I think, quality of work we'll get. We want to make sure that, you know, that Baldwin Park is offering something competitive. You know, especially because it's not just a job, even at the lowest, you know, even at the, at the bottom of the structure, the recreational leader is still important. They're the ones taking care of senior events, they're the ones taking care of. All the other events and they're, they're providing a service to our community. Want to make sure that, you know, we give them a, a reasonable rate. So I think this is a, an important conversation. I think it's a small portion of a very, very bigger conversation that will be taken on, I'm sure, later on in the future, but it's a important start. So just no more comments.
That your motion, Mr. Damian, do you want to make?
Yeah, I'm just waiting to see if there's any, any other, my council colleagues have any questions or comments? So my motion would be to start part-time staff entry level at sixteen eighty-two an hour. Also direct staff to incorporate a new part-time salary structure as part of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget, so that we can address the staff in whole.
Okay.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, Danny Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Yes, thank you for that, City Clerk. I believe that is the end of our consent calendar. And Mayor Pro Tim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So my request is for us to have a discussion and direct staff to potentially placing a ballot measure on term limits. So as you know, right now, the city of Baldwin Park has no term limits. My proposal would be to recommend a maximum of three terms, which would be twelve years. And then also I would recommend that we change the mayor's structure from a two-year term to a four-year term. Also, it would allow to where if, example, someone is a council member, they've done their twelve years and then let four years pass by. You cannot run again. Your twelve years is your lifetime maximum. However, if you want to pursue a career in politics. And you want to say you completed twelve years of city council and now you want to run for mayor, you can run for mayor and then start over another twelve years. So it's basically twelve years per seat, but you cannot, you know, wait out an election and then come back to run again for the same seat that you had already previously filled. Either for city council, mayor, treasurer or city clerk.
Okay.
Any discussions, comments, questions?
No, I'm happy to discuss that when we get the memo back to really understand all of that. But no, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, so staff, you got your direction. Thank you.
Great. So, Councilmember Hernandez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item here is like to have a discussion and provide perhaps, you know, a direction for the city to host a Baldwin Park Economic Revive and Thrive Summit. To support our business communities. This is, I think it's necessary for us to have our staff to pull together the various stakeholders in our community. That are providing those jobs that, you know, those part-times and those full-time jobs in our city. So I'd like for staff to, you know, to come back with us. We'll provide them a little bit more direction as to, you know, what a one-day summit could look like. So we can understand what the needs are of our business community and also how the city can help support them. As we begin to transition out of this pandemic and hopefully to an endemic in the near future. You know, they are some of the, they are the folks that are sustaining our city, especially the mom and pops. You know, we've, we, there is a little bit of struggle with providing them the ARP money to keep some of their storefronts open. So understanding that, you know, on the forefront, then, you know, trying to work with them, you know, during a pandemic, I think it's, it would be behoove us. To help, you know, understand their needs to see how we can best support them in all manners, whether it's youth employment. You know, expanding their mom and pop job, mom and pop operations to, you know, to a much larger capacity. These are just things that we can certainly discuss and work, of course, with our Baldwin Park Business Association as part of it, along with some other folks in the region that I'm sure. Can provide some resources and so forth for, you know, half day or so forth.
That's a great idea. Definitely do a lot more for our local businesses. Does anybody have any comments regarding Councilmember Hernandez?
Oh, I think that's a great idea. I, I support that.
Great.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next one. The next item is for council discussion is on re-engagement, again, our efforts on the business school. And non-governmental sectors on youth employment. You know, we had started pretty heavily with a youth employment program in the city with Manny's shop and other folks. Along with the, the Baldwin School, School District. But I think obviously because of the pandemic, we had a kind of roll that and stop some of that effort quite some time ago. So I'd like for us as a whole, begin that process so we can provide those first jobs and those learning opportunities for our young adults. And those young adults can range anywhere from sixteen years old, all the way to twenty-one is the scope of folks that I'm looking at as I'm thinking right now. But be able to assist them and, you know, provide them those opportunities to uplift them and to be successful in a, in an environment that's supportive of their first jobs. Or maybe their second job that they may have here. So.
I agree. I think it's important that we. That we partner and engage with everybody, including our school district. You know, you know, children aren't just part of the school district jurisdiction, they're part of our jurisdiction.
school district jurisdiction, they're part of our jurisdiction, right? At the end of the day, they go to school for eight hours and then with their residents twenty-four hours and in the future leaders of the city. So we want to make sure that we give them every opportunity to be, to grow up healthy and developed. So I agree. I think that's great.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
I just want to express my support for, for these two items as well. Um, you know, anytime we can support our business communities, it's, it, it presents a good opportunity for us. And then, of course, anytime we can support our youth with employment, um, I, I definitely have a history here in the city of Baldwin Park with summer youth employment programs, um, even, even having been a participant and, and knowing, uh, city staff that started in youth employment opportunities and, um, you know, just the impact that they, that they leave, um, in a very positive way. So absolutely want to be supportive of that. Um, I didn't get a chance to submit my requests, but, uh, you know, they happened more recently. Um, so let me just go ahead and verbalize it. I, I'd like to ask our chief of police to, uh, give us regular updates on the gang activity that's happening in our community right now and what we're doing in response. Um, right now, since it's kind of a hotspot, I'd like to have a regular report, chief, and you let, you let us know what is reasonable. But, you know, like I said, there is an urgency to it. And so at first I was thinking a quarterly basis, but we're on, we're on track for, um, you know, higher than usual activity. And so maybe we can have every other, every other meeting at least, a minimum, um, having the report back just to know what we're doing as a city in response to what's happening out in the community. And we're well aware and well informed. And then second, I wanted to ask about the, um, establishing a, a protocol for communicating with the council when incidents arise or, you know, are happening. Sorry, we're trying to get that quiet zone, right, Sam? So, it's in the works. Um, so having a, an established protocol for communication to the city council when a, a certain type of incident does occur, like a shooting um, or a stabbing, or, you know. So if you could let us know, chief, what that looks like at the next council meeting, that would be great. Those are my two requests. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I think that's a great idea. I want to make sure also that we are aware of the regional issue, right? Um, it seems that the pandemic and, and of course, everything that's going on is affecting everybody, and that includes, uh, county, the region, Southern California. So chief, if you can also add that to your, uh, to your data so that we can better understand how we compare, uh, and to see what's going on in the, in the area alone.
Yeah, right. Uh, gone.
Thank you. Um, yes, I agree with, uh, getting those reports, um, but I know some of it may have to be under closed session, depending on what it is that you're reporting. But that, that type of report would definitely help us better understand what's going on and what you are, are doing, which I know you are as a police department, but at the same time, make sure that we keep the confidentiality when needed. So certain information doesn't get out that needs to be out at the time. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, again, I just want to uplift the, the recommendation that, uh, Councilmember Garcia has mentioned. Uh, in fact, um, you know, a few months ago, uh, we've actually, the chief is supposed to, my memory serves me correct, he's supposed to be providing, uh, those crime stat reports back at our next, uh, council meeting, uh, in mid-March. Uh, so if, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but I think that's the timeline, uh, that, uh, folks have kind of provided, uh, that you've provided to us, uh, in regards to some of that information.
We did, we did discuss that yesterday. You're absolutely right. The, the issue is, uh, funding for a, the consultant that is supposed to push, put together a dashboard so that I can actually, uh, get that information that, uh, staff report is coming to you next council meeting for approval. It says, a staff report for twenty thousand dollars to, uh, allow, uh, the firm to, to create a dashboard so that we can extract the information from the systems that we have and actually, uh, provide a, 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 a decent, decent report that identifies gang or identifies criminal, like, uh, our crime stats that we need to put out and, so that I can actually work crime stats and, and help hold people accountable.
So, I appreciate, I appreciate that. Uh, you, I think you work within, uh, with our CEO where it doesn't have to come to our city council. I think the, the, uh, Enrique, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you have the, uh, uh, the, uh, authority to sign off on that, that through your, uh, purview of, uh, expenditure authority, or is it, or is it lower?
I'm at twenty-five, uh, twenty-five thousand, uh, minus one dollar, Councilmember Hernandez, so twenty-four nine ninety-nine ninety-nine.
Yep.
So I think the, did you say forty thousand, chief?
Those are twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah. So yes, we, we, we had, uh, just an interpretation of appropriation versus procurement with our finance department. But we've taken care of that with our city attorney. Yes, I, I have the authority.
Perfect. Chief, then, uh, it doesn't have to come back to council. You can just, uh, give it a, uh, Enrique Amaro, uh, and he'll take care of that for us. So, uh, again, the expectation is we start to see these, this information. Uh, you know, all of us, including Councilmember Garcia, have been asking about crime stat, uh, for well over years. Uh, and I'm the same way. I'm literally, you know, essentially, uh, we've given you the tools now, so, uh, let's try to move forward on this as quickly as possible, please. Thank you.
So it'll take six to eight weeks to extract it or to build a dashboard. But I definitely am also as frustrated as you all are because I, I can't tell what type of crime we're dealing with. So I, I appreciate the, uh, the help to get this tool done, and I'll get it done as soon as, as soon as that's signed.
And then, so I think just to double check, uh, when was, do you know when the last time was that we actually took a crime stat? Because we do have equipment, right? It's just, from my understanding, it wasn't being used.
The system is very cumbersome and it, it doesn't allow for, uh, the dashboard to be created, uh, and it's never been created before prior to the beginning here. There was a, you know, an analysis done by a former chief. And in that, it, it talks about, uh, IT in order to get that information. So that's what I'm building on.
Great. So can you also add that? So when you give us those first crime stats, can you give us a little bit of history on the crime stats? Obviously, it's taking you long because it sounds like you're building the system because it's never been used.
Correct.
You know, we've had the equipment.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, you, you know, you can give us a report on that process, what process you're working on. I think that helps us, uh, relay information as to what you've been doing since you've gotten here. And what are the things that you've pinpointed and what are the things that you're working on, right?
Yes, sir.
You know, I think we're all, uh, you know, it's, it's very important that we understand what the crime stats are, what, what we're able to compare into or what we're not able to compare to. And then go from there. So just a little brief history, uh, and then, of course, the crime stats from now. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
And then I think that ends our, uh, directions. So at this moment, uh, meeting is not adjourned, but the, the council will meet in closed session. So we are resuscitating back to closed session. Things, the majority of you will be not here when we come back. So good night, everybody.
Happy night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Recording stopped.
Yeah. We did one inch, right?
Se corrió, ¿no? Porque no era poco este, este.
Okay, so am I, oh, I auto-joined as a panelist, I guess. Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to promote.
All right. Recording in progress.
So we're live. David?
Uh, give me about a ten-second lag for Granicus to catch up.
No worries.
We're good.
All right. So we are back from closed session. City attorney, is there anything to report on?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no final action was taken on any closed session items. Therefore, there's no reportable action, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you for that. So at this moment, I will, uh, move to adjourn the meeting, nine forty-seven PM. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.